...on matters which are on the agenda today. Seeing none, we'll proceed. We have a docket to be approved. Is there a motion?
Motion.
I have a motion from Councilmember Ellinger to approve it and a second from Councilmember Meyer, Councilmember Crosby.
Yes, is this on the docket? Okay, yes, Mayor. I noticed if under number 53, please, if everybody could look at the docket, under first reading of resolutions, if we could just separate out, we've got a Commissioner on there for a pay increase, a pay adjustment, if we could just separate that out on Thursday night just for a purpose of discussion so it's not in there with 50 other people, I'd like to make that motion.
Second. Motion is to amend the docket to divide number 53 into two separate resolutions, one of which would deal with Kena Coe.
The Commissioner, it would be Commissioner Finance, please.
Yeah, and the other would deal with all of the other individuals. Is that correct?
I'm sorry?
There'd be two resolutions, one that would deal with Commissioner Coe and one that would deal with all the others.
Yes, since it's a readjustment.
All right. We have a motion and second to amend the docket. Councilmember Stenit.
Mayor, you can't do it right now. You can separate the vote Thursday night, but we can't amend the docket right now.
Thank you, Mr. Parliamentarian. So that being...
So Thursday night, we'll separate the vote. All right.
Councilmember James.
Can the Parliamentarian explain a little bit about why we cannot amend the docket? I thought that's what we were, are we not approving?
You can't table or rescind or anything. Once it's on the docket, the only time you can do that is during the official council meeting. We can, all we're doing today is vote to put it on the docket.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anything further? Councilmember Blues.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to place on the docket for the Thursday, February 12, 2009 council meeting, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a letter of commitment and the application of the Lexington Downtown Development Authority to the Kentucky Heritage Council for continuation of the Lexington Main Street program. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second to add that item to the docket. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That amendment to the docket carries. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve the docket as now amended? And all in favor of approving the docket as amended, please say aye. All opposed, no. The motion carries. Item three is the approval of the summary from February 3rd. Is there a motion?
Move the approval.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gordon and a second by Councilmember Beard to approve the February 3rd summary. Any discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to abstain. I would not.
Very well. Any further discussion? All in favor...
Is that on E, excuse me, Mayor?
Item three.
Okay. That's not the same one we talked about earlier, Doug, right? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Motion is to approve the summary for the February 3rd work session. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries and will note Councilmember Martin's abstention. We have a few budget amendments. Is there a motion?
Move the approval.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gordon and a second by Councilmember Ellinger to approve the budget amendments. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember James.
I wondered if anybody could give us a balance on the salt.
I don't see Commissioner Webb here or anyone from Streets and Roads. Okay, hang on just a second.
Okay, thank you.
We'll see if we can ask him to come in. Commissioner Webb, Councilmember James ask about the status of our salt supply from...
And the financial, if we have anything left in the fund specifically.
No, well, let me start with how much salt we have on hand. We did an inventory of that late last week and we believe, we took some in between the two snow events, the ice, and then we had a little break, then we had snow. We took delivery of about 2,000 tons during that time period. We currently have, we think, 3,800 tons available and are making arrangements or ordering an additional 1,500 tons.
And because this budget amendment is here, that means that we had gotten down to zero left for our purchasing.
Oh, no.
I'm trying to, a fund balance in the line item for salt.
Right, and actually, I'm not sure what happened with the, there is not a line item for salt in the Streets and Roads budget in the 2008 budget or 2009 budget. It was mixed in with other materials like blacktop patch and I was not here whenever the budget was done.
Okay.
Actually, it's the way the account code structure is set up. Salt is not a specific code unto itself. We went through this with the, I think you were on the link.
I was on the link, yeah.
And it does have other things in it. It's called maintenance and repairs or something like that. But they did run out of money in that account prior to ordering the last batch of salt. We did a budget amendment that took money out of debt service that we weren't going to need for this year because we had to have the money for salt and that's what we've done on the budget amendment that will be coming to you at your next meeting. We again are taking money out of debt service that we don't need in the current year. So because we don't have really much of a fund balance overall in government, you'll remember that we budgeted for less than $100,000 for a total fund balance. So I've been hitting this debt service account because there is a little bit of money there. But as we manage our way through the year, that's where we were anticipating having money with a revenue slowdown. So all of this is balancing against each other and eventually, all these accounts have to balance out. But the need for salt was greater than the need to try to make it through the month in any other account at that time. So we, you'll be seeing another budget amendment come to you.
Okay, and please refresh my memory during that links discussion because I remember a lot of talk about the fact that there wasn't a line item for salt and we were afraid that other things would tap into that same. How are we working on through our new system being able to have that line item specifically for salt?
We have, we have not made it, we weren't ever planning to add a, add a code for salt. One of the, one of the decisions that was made before I got here and with the implementation of the new chart of accounts was to collapse a lot of accounts that, that had had single items in them. It really doesn't make good accounting sense to have a code for every single thing in government that you buy. So that was collapsed at the time into other things that generally, for the most part, happened with the same folks at Streets and Roads, which is the blacktop for the potholes and that kind of thing. So what we did during the links though was try to pull out for you how much of that money had been spent on salt and how much of it had been spent on other things, which we can still do because we can sort by vendor or any other way we want to look at it. So we were never attempting to add a code for salt. I think this was, part of the problem during the link was, was that it was, it was something that the former Commissioner, I guess, had requested and didn't make it to the final end when they put the chart of accounts together. So we, we have chosen to this point not to add a code just for salt.
Okay. Thank you for that update, both of you. Thank you.
Any further questions on the budget amendments? We have a motion on the floor to approve them. All in favor of approving the budget amendments, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. We have a number of items of new business under section five. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gordon and a second by Councilmember Beard to approve the items of new business. Any discussion? I see none, so those in favor of approving the new business items, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Mayor, point of information, please.
All right.
Vice Mayor Gray. Excuse me for being in the back of the room, clarifying something else. Was item E related to the, was that on this? It was. I need to recuse on that as well. That's what, yep.
Mr. Mayor, I have to recuse on the Transylvania bonds.
Right.
You got...
And is that the same one?
I need to recuse on the same because an affiliated company is a vendor to Transylvania.
All right. So please note both Vice Mayor Gray and Councilmember Martin's recusal on item E.
Good question about this.
All right. I'm not sure, did we complete the vote on that? All right, those are approved.
Mayor, is it too late for me to ask a question on one of those items?
I suppose technically it is, but we can deal with that, so go ahead.
I just have a question about the, the bond projects and I don't know who to ask the question of, but I'm just concerned about, I'm actually interested in what our bond rating is and if there isn't some threshold of debt versus revenues that affects our bond rating.
Are you talking about item E particularly or some of the...
Well, just in terms of what, what the ratio of debt is to...
All right, I think that's Commissioner Coe that needs to address that.
Before, before it begins to affect your bond rating.
Okay, the industrial revenue, the issuance of industrial revenue bonds doesn't affect our debt capacity or our bond rating. Neither one of those are affected by the issuances of IRBs. We are only used as an instrument. But when we issue general obligation bonds, our standard rule has been to try to maintain a ratio of 10% of debt to general fund. But during the interim of the budget process, the council and some of the administration folks have been working through the capital improvement planning process and, I mean, we have so many unmet needs that I think we probably as a group have made a decision that we will exceed that 10%. We've spoken with each of the bond rating agencies about that decision and both seem to be fine with it as long as you have a plan to when you get, how you intend to come back to 10%. I think lots of cities are finding themselves in the same situation right now, particularly with having infrastructure issues and that kind of thing, that whatever debt capacity they might have established for themselves in the past, they're, they're having to look to exceed that. But we have been working very closely with both rating agencies as we move through the capital improvement, improvement planning process.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. I believe that takes us down now to presentations and the first one is from Budget and Finance, so Councilmembers, Stenit.
On January 27th, we had the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, the first one of the year. I was elected the chair, motion made by Ed Lane and passed without dissent, and I asked Councilmember Lane to be the vice chair of our Budget and Finance Committee. The two items on our agenda for our first meeting of the year, the first one was the financial report, which as many of you know, we did show through year-to-date, that would be December 31st, 2008, an uptick about 4.1% in revenues. However, that's not to be confused with other circumstances that showed a negative 500,000 employee withholdings for, through the month of December, as well as anticipation that the month of January will, will show our sharp decline back in the negative category due to corporate filings, filing before the end of the year in December. That's what that included, that 4.1%. So we should expect to see some of those corporate filings be refunded sometime before April 15th. Also, the other big expenditure on the expenditure side during the month or through the month of December was the payouts for retirements were up during the month of December. Overall, our financial situation, as reported by Commissioner Coe, we're still meeting our obligations in several categories as well as looking at making significant reductions in our expenditures throughout the remainder of the year, some of the accounts that have been frozen are professional services and food and household items, as many of our council members are aware. Also, the minimum fee for the business occupational license that many of you have been receiving phone calls on did have a balance of about 975,000 collected during the month of December. I know that was programmed into our operating budget for this current fiscal year. Our next item of discussion during our Budget and Finance meeting was the internal audit report on the community corrections. Three major highlights of that report, everyone should have been given a copy outside of the committee meeting, but we have those copies available if anyone would like a copy of the audit. But the biggest items out of that report, one was a change to an ordinance, which the administration will be bringing forward through the blue sheet process, and that ordinance is 196-2004. Some of those changes include how we collect revenue for the phone account. That account used to be separate as reported through the audit, now it is currently being in the process or should have already been merged with the general fund accounts at National City Bank. The other was the CAP, Community Alternative Program account, also was a separate account which also should be merged into our general fund account as well. And then the third big item on the community corrections audit was the software issue. We had some software issues that were reported, having another jail systems information on our current software database and that has been deleted. That information has been taken off our system as well as our current consultant that we have monitoring our software in terms of maintenance. Those items will be looked at by computer services and also, we will ask that in the future date, as changes are coming to us on the ordinance 196-2004, some of these issues may be put into intergovernmental committee for further clarification and follow-up in the future. Does anybody have any questions from the Budget and Finance Committee? One last note, couple things. One, we'll be looking for a new format, we'll be working with Councilmember Lane and Commissioner Coe to look at a new format for our Budget and Finance meetings coming up in terms of the reporting out sheet, as well as many of you have asked this week with the announcement of the mayor's budget hearings about our council links. I'm going to pass that around, last year links committee assignments. You all are interested or have, would like to have a say in what link you're on for this upcoming year. I will pass this out and just email myself before the end of the week as to what link you'd be interested in serving on. We'll try to get that list posted by next Tuesday. That way you have a week in advance to plan your calendars if you want to attend the appropriate mayor, mayor's budget hearings that begin on February 24th. So we get a little bit ahead of the game. Thank you to Councilmember James for helping speed us up on that process. So I'll be passing those out. If you have any feedback on your link, please get it to me by this Friday. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions for Councilmember Stenit? All right. Councilmember Ellinger.
Thank you, Mayor. The Service Committee summary is on page 83 and 84. The Service Committee met on February 3rd. We had a quorum, we had three items on the agenda. First item was the dog tethering update. Councilmember Beard gave an update of when the subcommittee met on the 22nd. They will be meeting again on this Thursday at 3:00. They requested a couple more members to that subcommittee, so I asked Councilmember Henson and Lawless to be part of that. The next item on the agenda was the virtual fake speed humps. We had requested Brad Fraser do some investigating what the city of Philadelphia had done. He said initially it was successful, but over time that it did not work. So he stated that at this point, they're not recommending that, for us to do that. The third item was the door-to-door peddler update. Lieutenant Kurt Singer came and spoke to us and said in 2008, they had 17 citations. One of the issues was when neighborhoods have no solicitation signs in the entrance to the neighborhoods if they would be not allowed to pedal there. And we've asked Mr. Shawner to send to a legal opinion from the law department, and he has done that, so we're waiting back for that to give to the police department. We adjourned at 1:35. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Ellinger? Very well. We're ready to proceed with council reports. Councilmember Feigl. All right, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item is just simply to report that the Stormwater Fee Task Force met February 5th and had a presentation on credits and incentives. And we will meet February 12th, this Thursday, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. here in the council chamber, and we will continue the discussion of credits and incentives. And you all, all council members will be receiving in your mailbox is a copy of the minutes and the PowerPoint presentation that was made at last Thursday's meeting. Secondly, I just wanted to remind council members of the confirmation hearing of Mike Webb, who is being proposed by the mayor as Commissioner of Public Works and Development. It's 6:30 on February 12th, right before our council meeting at 7:00. And then finally, I've had a number of calls this morning from neighborhood association people who received the bill for the business occupational license minimum fee. And I just wanted to route them to a phone number here in government. I've discussed this with our revenue folks. If you're a neighborhood association president or neighborhood association and you receive this bill and you have a question as to whether you should pay it, then you should call 258-3340. It's very specific what documentation you have to have in order to be exempt. So again, the number is 258-3340. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Stenit.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple things. One, in light of our recent weather events, I know the Neighborhood and Community Sustainability Grant is due on March 16th. Didn't know if there was a way we could possibly extend that deadline. Several neighborhood groups cannot meet the last couple weeks to vote on their grant application. Didn't know if we can offer maybe a two-week grace period through the end of March so that the group can have a chance to meet sometime in March at their next bi-monthly meeting. If we could do that, that would hold things up too much.
Commissioner Taylor, if you, is that okay? That works?
We could say March 31st would be the extension and we'll post that and get all that information out because I know several groups are wanting to apply. Thank you, Mayor. And then two other things. One, tonight, we'll be having the Liberty Park Town Hall meeting to discuss what will go into Liberty Park going forward and hopefully the public will be able to attend tonight for those folks that live in that area, as well as any of my at-large members are welcome to come, come tonight at 6:30 at Eastland Church of God there off of Liberty Road. And we'll get started there again at 6:30 tonight for the Liberty Park meeting. The next meeting is a meeting that was rescheduled because of the weather the last couple weeks was the Sixth District Annual President's Meeting. It has been rescheduled for February 23rd at Spencerian College at 6:30 as well. So that's February 23rd, 6:30 p.m. at Spencerian College for the Sixth District President's Meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Beard.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to place into Budget and Finance the issue of the $100 business license fee. I've heard from several people who have pled pretty valid cases that we may need a different formula than what we're using. And out ahead of our upcoming budget, I'd like to have another discussion on that.
Did you say budget or...
Budget and Finance, I think.
I have a motion to refer the item of the minimum business license fee to Budget and Finance. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries.
And second, I would like to ask you, Mayor, if, while there's been a lot of water going all over the dam and ice and tree limbs and everything else, whether we've thought about when we're going to reschedule our retreat?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I've had some communications with Vice Mayor Gray's office today about the possibility of doing it on the March 6th or March 13th, and I gather March 13th is probably the better of those, those two days from, from our perspective. And I guess maybe just a show of hands would be the quickest way to see if March 13th works for most folks. If it, let me put it this way, does anybody have a problem with March 13th as a substitute retreat date? Yes.
Right.
Right. Okay.
Time your question.
All right. What, 13 out of 15, it looks like. We may, you want to go with the 13th? Yes, yes, sir. Yeah, March 6th or March 13th were the dates we were talking about. So March 13th, let's shoot for that. Thank you. Councilmember Beard.
Thank you, Mayor. That's all I needed.
Councilmember McCord.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple things. Jerry, while I have you out here in the audience, if you wouldn't mind, I just want to ask you a question about the workshop next week as far as the time goes. But while he's coming up here, I just wanted to ask our CIO, Rama, if you don't mind, just, there's a bit of confusion with regard to the 3-1-1 calling as far as debris pickup. There's some people that kind of know what, what to do, some people that don't, and we're not really getting a consistent, I'm finding some inconsistency. Just, I wanted to reiterate that whatever our debris plan is, that folks when they call 3-1-1, that the whole staff is singing off the same page. So just, just be aware that there's a little bit of confusion. Anything that you can do to kind of spread that consistent message, I'd appreciate it. Okay.
Great, thank you. Next Tuesday, Jerry, the 17th, is the Parks Master Plan Workshop. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
What's the exact time and location?
10:30, excuse me, 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 in the fifth floor conference room.
Okay, I appreciate that. I had my times messed up last week and I wanted to ask the expert, so...
That'll be followed by a presentation much briefer here at Work Session.
Okay.
While I'm here, Mayor, let me ask whether you're rescheduling the mayor's retreat for the Tates Creek Ballroom at, on the 13th. Is that correct?
You're Johnny-on-the-spot today.
And that'll be all day?
Yeah, that would be great if you could.
We'll take care of it. Thank you.
Jerry, while I have you up here, as far as those presentations, to what degree of finality are you, do you feel like that they are in as they're presenting? What are they actually presenting at that point in time?
It's a complicated document that runs about 200 pages with a few appendices. There's four or five pieces. Most importantly perhaps is an organizational piece for the Division of Parks with a lot of detail. I think in an hour, they will present you with a detailed summary and allow you lots of opportunity for questions. I have, I will have the document electronically that I can make available to you ahead of time. I will have that no later than dawn on Monday, which I can make available to you if you have time to look at it. I don't think you'll have an opportunity to go through it with them in great detail because it covers five major pieces of the park's operation.
Okay, so this isn't really a final, final report, it's, but it's...
It is. What they'll give you is a summary of their final report. They'll have hard copy and electronic copies. I would expect to come back to you at a point in time and ask you to approve the park's master plan in concept. I think there's way too much in it for you to weigh in on every detail. 10 years ago, we asked you and you approved the concept and I would expect that we would come back to you for that same request.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Just another couple announcements. Thursday, March 26th, I know we're a little ways away, but I want to make sure that council is aware that a workshop is set up. That's a before council meeting from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. George Bender with the American, I can't think of what it is, AC/EC, the engineering firms across the state of Kentucky has come in to, to get us up to speed on QBS, which is quality-based selection and moving our government towards getting away from just low bid, but moving more towards the professional services side, QBS. All, the administration, the council members, your staff are invited. I'll announce that a couple more times, but I think it's very imperative. We will probably come out of that meeting very quickly with moving, moving legislation to, to start adopting that. So certainly want you to put that on your calendar, March 25th from 5:00 to 6:00. Also, I wanted to announce that this past weekend, we had the National Wheelchair Basketball Tournament in town and we're just very appreciative of those folks and those athletes being here to compete. Our own home team, the Cardinal Hill, Hill on Wheels group, will be taking on the Kentucky Legends coached by Kyle Macy on February 20th. coached by Kyle Macy, on February 20th, Friday of February 20th, at Transylvania. If anyone would like to... More information on that or tickets, please call our office at 258-3215. And finally, I just wanted to offer my deepest sympathy to the family of Scott Brown, one of our folks here at LFCG who passed yesterday, and deepest sympathy goes to his family for their loss. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember McCord. Councilmember Crosby.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to announce a few things. First, tonight at 7:00 p.m., the Eastlake Neighborhood Association is having their neighborhood meeting at Eagle Creek Library. And secondly, after many years of being held in Owensboro, Kentucky, Lexington was very lucky to land the Green River Firefighters Association Officer School. And this is going to bring over 1,000 firefighters and their families to Lexington over the weekend of February 26th through the 29th. So that's a pretty big deal, and we're going to have a lot of people visiting, so I just wanted to make sure everybody knew about that. Lastly, I've been getting some complaints from some of our neighborhoods, particularly the one that's meeting tonight, about some of the tree removal and branches and debris from the ice storm. And just to remind everybody that it is going to get picked up. Just put it on the curb and don't put it in your streams in places that it doesn't belong because that just creates a bigger problem. So if you have any questions, please feel free to call our office, 258-3214, and we can direct you to the right place. But please, please, please do not put it in places that it does not belong. It will get picked up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Crosby. And just incidentally, so everyone's aware, particularly those who might be viewing on GTV3, I've asked Commissioner Mike Webb to give us a bit of an update on the debris removal plan as part of the mayor's report this afternoon. So I hope we'll have a few more details for you here in just a moment. Councilmember, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Two upcoming neighborhood association meetings tonight at 7:00 p.m. The Meadowthorpe Neighborhood Association will hold its monthly meeting at the Community Center in Louis Mac Park. There will be an election of officers tonight, so I'm looking for a good turnout and an election of officers to carry the neighborhood association through the next year. And then Monday, February 16th, the Windburn Neighborhood Association will meet at 6:30 p.m. in the Martin Luther King Park Community Center. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember James.
Thank you, Mayor. I move approval of the Neighborhood Development Bond Fund List... Oh, I'm sorry, Neighborhood Development Fund List.
Have a motion to approve the NDF. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, I would like to inform all watching council members, mayor, and others that received an email notifying us that Robert Finn, who was the first Second District Council member after the merged government was formed, passed away on February 3rd. And I wanted to extend my condolences and sympathy to Robert Finn's family and let them know that he was a very valuable asset to the urban county government, and I will make sure that we are aware of his contributions and we'll be sending something around to council members and have something available for folks that list his contributions. And hopefully, there'll be a resolution forthcoming in his honor. Also, I would like to... This past weekend, I celebrated with others, the National Black HIV/AIDS Awareness Day was held on... It happened on Saturday, and there were events that happened all over the nation. Here locally, I attended an event at St. Paul Episcopal Church on Upper Street. And there, we talked about how HIV and AIDS has a huge impact on African-American community, much more significant than on the majority community for multitude of reasons. But I wanted to take this opportunity from the horseshoe to let everyone, not just African-American, know how important it is that you be tested and that you get information on HIV and AIDS. AVOL was represented there, as well as University of Kentucky and some other churches, and Volunteers of America was there as well. So there are many places you can go to get tested and to find out information, but a good source for you readily available to me to give you is AVOL. That's AIDS Volunteers... Excuse me, organization that's located on North Limestone, at 263 North Limestone. And their phone number is 225-3000. That's 225-3000. They can help you with preventative measures. They can help you with testing. They can help you if you just have general questions, and the folks there are ready and willing to help you and serve you in any way that they can. Also, if you're looking for a place to volunteer, they're in need of volunteers there. And lastly, I just wanted to extend my thanks to all that sent cards, food, and prayers to my family. The past couple of weeks, we had a loss of my sister-in-law, Stephanie James, and I just thank you for your support. And you all have been so overwhelmingly, just overwhelmingly kind to our family and on behalf of me and my husband and my father-in-law and my children. Thank you very much for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ellinger.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to remind the council that we will be having at 5:00 today our Foreable Housing Task Force workshop. And then also, I requested last week for Commissioner Webb to come speak about the debris, but it sounds like that will happen during the mayor's report, so we can all look forward to hearing it then. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Crosby.
Sorry, Mayor. I forgot during my report. We had gone back and forth. We've had some correspondence regarding the vacant property commission and the ordinance that's in the books. And I know Councilmember James and I have talked about it because she's done a lot of work, I know, regarding this in the land bank. And after some correspondence with you, it was recommended that perhaps we set up... Either look at it as the council of the whole or set up a task force. So what I would like to do is maybe suggest that the vice mayor set up a task force to look at this and include Councilmember James and myself on this task force so that we can look at both perspectives of this ordinance and then bring it back to the council. Because I think right now, with all the different things going on, probably studying it as a whole probably is not the most... Does not make the most sense at this point. So I don't know if I need to make a motion. I think the vice mayor can just appoint a task force. Do I need to make a formal motion? Or...
That's...
How would you prefer, Vice Mayor? Can you just appoint one? Okay, thank you.
Okay. That's... I appreciate both you and Councilmember James bringing that issue up because it is a complicated one, but an important one for both the business and the residential properties we have here, and I'm glad you're addressing it. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to make a report? Fair well. We have a few matters to be approved in the way of board appointments. A motion to approve those would be in order. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Land, a second by Vice Mayor Gray to approve the appointments listed. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Now, I'd like Commissioner Mike Webb, if he would, to come up to the podium. As I think everybody on the council knows, and I suspect a number of people in the community know, both Mike and a lot of the folks in the Department of Public Works and Development have been extraordinarily busy over the last, I guess, two weeks ago today.
It's two and a half weeks now.
Was really the tea time, but you all have done a great job, Mike, and I want you to convey my gratitude to everybody who's been out there working around the clock to get things cleaned up. But I thought it might be helpful if you could just give everybody a real short version of what has gone on over the course of the last couple of weeks, both in the way of snow removal and in the way of debris removal, and then answer any questions that folks may have.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go back to, I believe it's January 27th, when actually the event began. It was a Sunday night. We had had some snow predicted. And that Sunday evening, we started and we placed people in their geographic areas and began salting. And Monday morning, we went on our 12-hour shifts that week, two and a half weeks ago. That'd be January 26th, Monday, January 26th. And for the next week, we actually went from about a two-inch snowfall to freezing rain and then back to a snowfall within three days. And during that time period, Tuesday evening is actually when the ice started to build up, we began getting tree calls, trees falling in the right-of-way, trees falling across the sidewalks, and began responding to those. During that time period, we also, as it rained, I think about 5:00 in the afternoon on Tuesday the 27th, had pretty heavy rains from the afternoon on into the evening where it turned to a freezing rain. We began to have primary routes into Lexington flood because we had plowed the snow on Monday and covered up catch basins. And so we... What we found is Streets, Roads and Forestry was dealing with a series of issues that continually changed for us. First, it was a typical snow incident. Then it was some flooding issues. Then it became trees, back to snow. You know, I really learned some things about streets and roads during that time period. The folks out there, the people out there that are the frontline workers are extremely flexible. Those folks can run a plow. They can get off and operate a shovel. They're very good at operating chainsaws, and they can finish concrete whenever the time comes, and they can patch potholes and do it very efficiently. And I can't tell you how pleased I am with their response to this incident. Also out there in the supervisory area, I can't tell you how pleased I am there also. We have a group of people that actually learned and saved tools from 2003 that made their management of this ice incident and the snows that followed and the tree issues manageable. You know, during a three-day period, which we started around midnight on the first day, they traveled every street in the urban services area and cut every tree they found down. Plus, they responded to trees across the road incidents on the spot, dispatched people to have them cut, all while they were clearing priority roads over and over because the incident was continuing. Some areas that I also found, I thought, very impressive was their ability, number one, the ability of the government to draw other labor in to support the emergency. Just about every... And I don't want to name the different divisions because I don't want to leave anybody out, but we had folks from every division that had available labor that came with their equipment and supported tree trimming, supported plowing, supported opening up catch basins, whatever we needed. And, you know, engineering provided folks to do coordination and oversight and be our eyes up front. We, during the... As it became apparent that we could no longer respond to individual tree issues, what we did was we took a tool that was put together back in 2003 by GIS, plotted all of our trees, down calls in there, and picked the areas that appeared to have the most damage. Overnight, we found out that we had some National Guard support, and the next morning, we began responding by area rather than two incidents where we could be very effective. And then within three days, we ran completely through the urban services area. At the same time, we had significant issues out in the county where trees pulled down. You could drive a car or a pickup truck under them, but you couldn't get a snow plow through them. And some incidences where we had multiple trees across county roads. In those incidents, we had folks out. We gathered up bucket truck equipment from Traffic Engineering. We got drivers for those bucket trucks. They managed traffic and streetlight issues and still were able to lend us equipment. And just very proud of the fact that all these departments pulled together, the willingness of the people that came and worked, the willingness of the departments and divisions to provide those people, and how they were coordinated to work efficiently. Very impressive to me. It's whenever you are set up to supervise a number of folks and you expand that group of folks, double it, sometimes even more than double, bring out, bring in people that aren't accustomed, like the National Guard, to where your streets are, how you do work. And they manage that very effectively, and it was obvious they did of how fast they moved through things. So very impressive to me. And our ability to declare a snow emergency and get the vehicles off the road that we... On those priority routes, very important. What we found is in an ice incident, we had less problems with damage to private property because those vehicles were off the road. We were able to clean them quicker, and we were able to return. An important thing. Because there weren't cars parked there, we could get to those catch basins. So things really moved well. Actually have a little synopsis, which I won't take you all through, but even now, just two weeks after, I can't... I could not remember all the things we did in that first week. Very impressive. And our folks took... After that first Saturday, they worked... Were still on the 12-hour shift. Sunday of that first week, they went... They worked an eight-hour shift, still dealing with a lot of debris, and came back, worked one day on an eight-hour shift and went right back to a 12-hour shift, split up, and started taking care of the next snow and extremely cold temperatures. And then the aftermath of extremely cold temperatures, potholes. We're getting a large number of potholes reported. Right now, we are addressing those. We are trying to keep within our target of 48-hour turnaround. Many of those we're doing quicker, but not all of them are being done quicker than 48 hours. So basically, one of the things I'd really like to do was, number one, thank the folks in Streets, Roads and Forestry for all their hard work and how they address these... The snow and the ice, and to thank all those who supported us, including the National Guard, who came in there and didn't question where we sent them. We sent them out with, you might call, an inspector to keep them moving, to keep them going from street to street and to look ahead, and they never looked up. They just continued working. And, you know, right along with that are the people that maintained the chainsaws. We ran chainsaws 24 hours a day for three consecutive days. We didn't send any of those chainsaws out to be sharpened or repaired. That was all done in-house. We kept those things going, ordered parts every morning, put them back together, sent them out. Plow repair. Our plows... We have three ice plows. Our plows are not designed for ice specifically. They're snow plows, the majority of them. We had very cold temperatures. First, we had ice. Then later, we had snow and very cold temperatures. It's extremely hard on the plows, and we had a lot of repair that had to be done with those, but we were... Our folks were able to maintain them. The folks from Fleet Management were able to make the repairs we needed. We were able to make the plow repairs we needed and keep those things out on the road where we needed them. Again, just a great response to a pretty tough situation. And even though we had a great weekend, the issues are still out there for streets and roads. The potholes continue to be an issue. We continue to clean debris on private right-of-ways on Manal War out in the county. We are still trimming and pruning. We're still responding to some down-tree calls that come in after the fact. We're still working with all that. All that being said, I'm very pleased with how Streets, Roads and Forestry and the rest of the government responded, but that's not to say that we have a perfect snow plan. And at some point, I would like to go back and revisit our plan with a group and take a look at some of the issues. Whenever you put a plan under strain, that's when you really see the flaws. And I don't think this plan has been revisited for a while. And I think we get into the spring, we get away from these issues and get Lexington cleaned up, it's time to go back and revisit how we prioritize streets. Do we need another priorities level? Do we need different equipment or whatever? All those things, I think, bear revisiting. That being said, on to debris removal on private pickup streets. That being said, on to debris removal on private pickup streets. What we have done there, purchasing has put together an RFP, and we've done that along FEMA guidelines. It has to be done a certain way. It requires a certain amount of inspection, both at the pickup site and at the delivery site. So what we've done is we've taken the urban services area, divided it into six quadrants. Some of those quadrants are heavy with public, private pickup streets, some of them aren't. And we want the ability, if we can, to use our streets and roads people in the light areas. So we're bidding each one of those areas by the cubic yard of removal. Those bids went out on Monday, they went out on Friday, I'm sorry, this past Friday. They will be back in Wednesday. I believe that they're opened at noon. And following the opening, we have a group that's already organized to evaluate those bids based on quantities. What we've done is we've estimated the quantities with some of our engineering folks. The contractors will estimate the quantities in each area they're bidding on so we can do a comparison and kind of get a feel for what the cost will be based on their price for removal. And then we hope to quickly award those contracts. And we, our target is to have some contract crews in private, on private garbage collection streets by Monday. And what we think will happen is the number of folks we have out there will build. This has been a very quick process, and I know there is a desire for information about when will my street get its pickup. What we hope to do is get some information out later this week, just about a starting location. And as we get started, we'll get a better feel for how quickly these folks move through the private pickup areas, and we'll be able to update information on our website. We'll have, get a map on the website with each of the areas and be able to show what was done and what we suspect will be done in the next couple of days.
Thank you. Questions, council member Ellinger?
Thank you, mayor. Thank commissioner for that update. And I guess we have also commissioner Taylor here to talk about our own pickup here for the public, if you'd like to, if you want to. And then I got a couple of questions.
If I may, I think there was one question last week about what's, what lengths and does it have to be bound for the folks in the private areas? The pickup that we will do with contractors, we'll go by the same lengths that we're doing with our own garbage collection and the trash collection. Five-foot lengths, doesn't need to be bundled, should be stacked between the sidewalk and the curb whenever possible. If there is no sidewalk, as close as you can get it to the road without putting it in a ditch line.
Can I ask a question on that? Now, what if you have a big limb that they can't put in a five-foot if they don't have a chainsaw? Is it their responsibility, Land, to owner to have it cut up then?
Everything that we cut during that three, four-day period, we cut in lengths five-foot or shorter. If they have a limb on their property and what we cut was on the right-of-way and out in the street, if you have a limb on your property that you want us to pick up, it needs to be cut in five-foot lengths.
Okay. One question on the, were we talking about the FEMA? And if we, and I guess one thing we can talk about, and commissioner Taylor can talk about too, is if you, we have two opportunities if we want to take it on our own to take it out to the landfills, correct?
Absolutely. And since commissioner Taylor is really working with that, I'll let her speak to that.
And I guess, can you answer this question while I'm thinking about it? Do we get reimbursed from FEMA if people take it out there, or is that just a wash then? If they went ahead and helped themselves out? Because we wouldn't have to then contract somebody out to do it because they did it on their own? Would we get reimbursed for that, or were they?
I don't know.
We would only get reimbursed for whatever expenses we actually incur.
That's what I figured.
So we would probably be eligible for reimbursement, for instance, for the people who are at the landfill.
Okay.
But we wouldn't get any reimbursement for the costs incurred to the residential owner who takes their debris, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry. I did want to say how much I also appreciated the work done by the Division of Water Quality and Waste Management folks. They do a lot of support activity, and I wanted to comment on something that you all really voted to support, and that's the power supplies to the two treatment plants. Because you'll notice in this particular discussion, we haven't had to discuss sewage overflows, and that's because we had power backups and actually didn't get back to the main power till last week at Town Branch. So there was a lot of work done to get that in place. We had a few pump stations that we lost. The first night, we lost eight. But there were backup plans and generators, and all of our main pump stations continued to operate, and all of the others that had generators, we fueled around the clock to keep those running so we didn't have an overflow. So I think that's progress, and that was something that you all supported. As far as the public pickup, Steve informed me this morning that they finally got through the first loop, the, what they call the A quadrant, but it's the Monday Pickup Day group. So they've made a complete loop through the Monday pickup group. Now, some folks, of course, got their stuff to the curb after they went through. Today, they've started the Tuesday pickup loop, and we'll continue to loop through those cycles until we get it all picked up. Again, Steve estimated early that it would be about five weeks, and we're one week into that, and we don't have any reason to think that that isn't going to be enough time. In the meantime, though, we do have a number of folks that have called and asked if they could bring their materials somewhere, and they can. Haley Pike facility's been open and has plenty of room. We have a contractor out there that operates chipper, but it is inconvenient for some folks. It's kind of a distance, depending on where you live in Fayette County. So we also have set up a temporary, a place to receive wood, and that's the training pad on old Frankfurt Pike, the pad that's built on top of the old landfill. And they opened yesterday, and we're doing brisk business in the afternoon, from what I understand. I don't have a tonnage estimate for what we've collected. They are keeping track of who comes in or how many people have come in and about how much, and then we'll weigh that. When it goes into a truck, it'll go out to the Haley Pike landfill. We'll get a weight, and we'll give you a report on what we were able to collect, so.
I didn't have any questions. I did want a comment and commissioner Webb on the potholes, because that's another issue we just discussed. And I actually had a constituent call me Friday that had an issue with one, and they called me back, and I called Lexcall. And I think if you would go with the proper procedure, if somebody has an issue with the pothole, what to do, but they called me back by Friday afternoon, it was already filled. So I want to thank you all for that.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity because calling 311 is the quickest way to get your pothole filled and trying to get a hold of streets and roads. As you can imagine, we're still dealing with the breeze on our own. The number of calls we can keep from going out there, it really keeps those folks focused on what they have to do and the chore ahead of them. So calling 311 is the best way. Just put together some information for Michelle Koo today. Since approximately, I believe it was since February 4th, we have had 258 pothole reports. What we're doing is area-wide, like we did with trees. With the extreme freeze we had on our streets, we popped out a lot of spots on them, a lot of old pothole repairs, and there's some new ones out there, too. So what we did, we have added crews as the reports have come in, but we're not just filling what we find or what's reported. As we go out, we have people in geographic areas, they're given a list of potholes in that area. As they work through the day, they encounter additional potholes, they're filling those, doing the paperwork on them and bringing them in. So, but we've had 258 as of about noon today. We had all but 79 of those, 258 have already been patched, and even some of those have, they're still out on the trucks. But that seems to, that activity has really jumped in the last two days. So, but 311 is, will get that repaired the quickest.
And I'm going to make one caveat to that, though. 311 might not work for all cell phones, because I know it doesn't work for mine with Verizon. So if not, you have to call Lexcall, and that would be 425 CALL or 425-2255 in case the 311 does not work. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Council member Gordon, then council member Feigl.
Commissioner Taylor. Now that the public pickup has been, they've done the whole sweep on the Monday pickup for the debris, what advice can you give to Monday pickup people who are still cleaning up debris and filling their lennies? I've seen a lot of them on the street for a few, you know, since yesterday morning now. Should they just fill them up, continue to stack things by the street, and they'll eventually be picked up? Or what advice would you give?
Normally, you'll get your leni picked up on the same day as you at your trash and recycle. And so now we'll go back to normally picking up lennies, but if we see an accumulation, we relay that back to waste, and then typically, we may be able to swing out and get it if it's a big accumulation. Normally, we're hoping that we got most of it on the first sweep and that you can put stuff in your leni like you normally would, and we can come pick that up.
Are the lennies being picked up on Monday?
They're going to start after this first loop.
Okay, okay. Very good. Thank you.
Council member Feigl.
Commissioner Webb. I attended a neighborhood association meeting last night in the 5th district, and there are many streets over there that have medians with lots of trees, like on Hanover. And the question that I got was, who will be responsible for cleaning up those medians?
In those public areas, it will probably be the forestry folks who ultimately do that. Right now, they are working, we have a lot of those folks still pruning, still dealing with down trees and cleaning up. But as we get through this, whenever those are trimmed and cut, they'll take those along with them. They won't be left there in a pile whenever we can get there, but that will be streets and roads.
But I mean, just in terms of cleaning them up and cutting them into the appropriate sizes, is that the responsibility of the neighborhood?
If it's out in a median away from the property and it's Streets, Roads and Forestry will take care of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? And council member Blues.
Just a quick question for commissioner Taylor. To make sure that I understand this, the leni pickups for, let's say, those who are now in the Tuesday loop, and then subsequent to that will be the Thursday loop, we're not picking up from the lennies until they've made that first pass? Is that correct, or?
That was my understanding from Steve, and I'll clarify that for you. But once, once they get the main debris off the sidewalk and that sort of thing, if your leni's out there with material in it, they should be able to take it now when they come through on that first pass. But once we get through that first pass, then we plan to go back to the normal leni pickup.
I see. So, so you can put the leni out along with the pile of debris?
A lot of people have been doing that, and the truck's there, so they might as well go ahead and get it while they're there. That's the way I look at it.
Okay, thank you.
So, okay, thanks.
Anything further? All right. Thank you both, and appreciate all the good questions and all the good work that has gone on there. The last thing I would mention is just a bit of a follow-up to some remarks made by council member McCord a few moments ago. As all of you know by now, Scott Brown, who was a very valuable member of our Department of Finance and Administration, passed away very unexpectedly yesterday. He leaves four children at home and a big gap, not only at home, but here at Lexington, Fayette Urban County Government as well. I got to know Scott most extensively in the context of the work on the Policemen's and Firefighters Retirement Plan Fund, and his work was always exemplary, and he brought a cheerful spirit to all of his tasks. We will miss him sorely. As of this morning, I had not heard any funeral arrangements yet, and I suppose, commissioner Coe, that's still the case. So, so as soon as we have those, we'll try to pass them along, and I'm sure they'll be in the paper as well. But please keep Scott's family and coworkers in your thoughts and prayers. That's all I have in the mayor's report department. That takes us down now to public comment on issues not on the agenda. Does anyone wish? Oh, yes. Chief Brannan. I should have called on you just a moment ago, but I think we've had some issues that may create some issues for the fire department, and our fire marshal being here today, it was a good opportunity to call those to everybody's attention.
Well, thanks. I'd like to commend the two commissioners and their departments as well for their response to the tree removal. Seems like everybody's given a big effort, all the division and government. This ice storm has gone, if you can say it, much smoother than the last, I think. I know during the last ice storm, we did give some reprieve for folks that needed to burn some of the tree debris, if they lived on larger parcels like one-acre lots. But this year, we've made a decision that we're not going to allow any open burning in residential areas. We still have the burn permit process you can use if you're living on a farm or maybe a golf course, those type folks. That link is on the government webpage. Just follow the links and you can get to that burn permit requirements if you, if you want to proceed that way. If you have any questions about the burn permits, you can call our fire investigators at 231-5672. Any questions on open burning?
Thanks, chief. Any questions? Very well. Thank you. Does anyone now wish to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda? Seeing no comment, a motion to adjourn would be in order. I have a motion by council member Ellinger and a second by council member Myers to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries.